Good evening, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Matthews Board of Commissioners for January fourteenth, twenty nineteen to order. We'll start out with a safety minute. We obviously have a lot of people in the room. If we, if you have any bags or anything, please move them out of the aisleways between the chairs and either push them under your chair or under the chair in front of you. If we have to evacuate, there's a stairwell over to the right as you go out the door, and there's also a stairwell to the left. You can go down the back and into the parking lot. The stairwell to the right takes you out to the green in front of the building. And just please move away from the building. Check the defibrillator this afternoon. It's working. It is out to the right side of the receptionist desk, hanging on the wall. If we have to call nine-one-one, the office's phones do not need any precursor number. It's just nine-one-one, and of course, your cellphones work with nine-one-one. Also this evening, we have new lights in this room. Some of you may notice it's a little brighter. These are LED lights. We have them installed. The payback period is twelve to twenty-four months on these lights. And if everybody sits real still for a while, apparently these lights will dim. And so if you see that happening, it's not your eyes, it's part of the process. Once somebody moves, they'll go back up and get bright again. So if you feel like standing up, moving around, that'll help keep the lights bright during the meeting. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the invocation. And I did want to start out by letting folks know that one of our former commissioners, Suzanne Gully, passed away this morning. Suzanne served on the board from December two thousand and one through December twenty thirteen. And she was the mayor pro temp twice, from two thousand and three to two thousand and five, and from two thousand and nine to two thousand and eleven. So I'd ask you, as we go through the invocation, to please think about Suzanne's family and what they're going through, and please keep your thoughts and prayers with them. So those who care to, please join me in prayer. Father, we gather this evening to make decisions for our community. May we use our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral, as we consider the benefits and the drawbacks of each matter that is placed before this council. May we always act in accordance with what is best for our citizens, seeking to serve with respect for all. May our efforts be blessed with insight, guided by understanding, and may our personal faiths give us strength to act in the best interest of our community for the matters that come before us. Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item is items to be added to the agenda. Mr. Manager, do we have any?
No items to be added to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Next item is public comment. We have several folks who signed up to speak. Your time is limited to four minutes per person. And first up is Harold Hood.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council. I want to start off first-
If you could say your name and address.
I'm sorry, Harold Hood. I live on twenty-three thirty-nine Rice Road. Been there quite a few years now, so I'm not a young fellow. But anyway, first of all, I'd like to compliment you folks in the planning board on the park that looks like is now completed. I've had some folks that have visited my home and asked me about that, and the park looks like it's going to be a nice addition over there for the folks in that neighborhood. So whoever had anything to do with it, thank you very much for that. We had concerns at first, but it looks like it's just going to be great for the community. And so we're looking forward to seeing what comes out of that. The second thing I'd like to say is, I know we're having a continuation of the rezoning on the property beside us there on Rice Road, and I would ask that you just make sure, please, on behalf of all of us in that neighborhood, that we listen closely to the facts or whatever is presented, and also take into consideration what our neighborhood has been like over the years, how it currently is, and what can be done to that neighborhood to make it still a very enjoyable place to live like it's been for so many years. I know land's running out in Matthews. It's running out everywhere. As my dad said a long time ago, they're not making any more land. But it is very important what is done with it. I'm sure that one of these days that I'll probably have to sell, because I was just telling Jay Miller, a college friend of mine back there, and the guy who represents the sale of that land, that I've had four calls in the past month about my property, but I'm not ready to sell yet. But whenever I do, I'm going to make sure that whenever, whoever comes in there, that it will be an addition, a welcome addition to what's going on versus something that would be unwelcome. So I thank each and every one of you for listening carefully and closely to what is being proposed, and that you think about what it will, how it will benefit or take away from the existing neighbors. It's an R fifteen neighborhood, basically around there, and I believe that what they've asked to go to is an R V S, bypassing R twelve, R nine, down to R variable size. And that is tremendous reduction compared to what's around there. So I just ask for you to use your wisdom and listen carefully, and think about us as well, and think about the folks who are wanting to sell. Like I say, I'm sure that's important to them as well. But that's what I have to say, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hood. Next is John Giadetti. John, if you'll state your name and address for us, please.
Hello, Mayor and Board. My name is John Giadetti, and I am a resident, six-month resident of Matthews. And I just wanted to thank all of you, Commissioners and Mayor Paul Bailey, for all the hard work you're doing, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Gina Hoover, twenty-four seventeen Stevens Mill Road. On December eleventh, twenty seventeen, all of you swore oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of North Carolina. And by not doing so, you also swore that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office. The first ten amendments of the Constitution were ratified effective on December fifteenth, seventeen ninety-one, and these are known as the Bill of Rights. In Amendment One, it states, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion, or prohibiting the freedom free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the right of the people peaceably to assemble, and to petition the government for a redress of grievances." Tonight, you will be discussing your policies to be read before public comment. In this statement, it states, "As we ask that all speakers be respectful and refrain from defamation of character." According to Black Law's dictionary, defamation is the act of harming the reputation of another by making a false statement to a third party. Because you do not appreciate the behavior of subci- citizens is not defamation of character, nor is it defamation when a citizen comes forward with his or her concerns of behavior, ethics, financial profit, or actions taken by anyone on this council, we have the right to petition government. In the mini-conference draft note, it is noted that Mayor Bailey stated, "We have the freedom to say what we think and believe. We, the people, also have that right." So when you have decided to abridge the citizens' comment for their freedom of speech, not only have you violated the First Amendment, you have also violated your oath, therefore leading for you to faithfully discharge yourself from office." And I'd like to give one of these to the town clerk for record. Thank you.
Next, Robert Havelka. Havelka, excuse me.
Robert Havelka. I live over here at Paces Point, one of five-twenty Paces Avenue. I just, especially after that, would like to just reaffirm that I appreciate the job the board has been doing, as well as yourself, Mr. Bailey. I've enjoyed those breakfasts with you over there. It's been good. I think that with the recent revelations regarding the Charlotte City Council and the County Commission and their lack of accountability that the Charlotte Reserve has been reporting around lately regarding Greenway Trails and everything else, I think it goes without saying that we appreciate the wonderful job you do, how connected you are to the community, and the accessibility of each and every one of you, and also the user-friendliness of the website in finding all the information for the town of Matthews. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Leon Thret.
Leon Thret, fourteen-two-two-seven Buckton Lane, Matthews, North Carolina. Have been living in this community for a little over thirty years, and to Mayor Bailey and the Commissioners and all of you who serve in Matthews, thank you. I know that usually you get a group coming in to remind you of what you need to do differently, what you need to do better. But as a long-term residence of this community, I just want to say thank you. I enjoy and have enjoyed my community. I know there's still a lot of work to be done, and I want you to know your community, at least from where I stand, supports you, stand with you, and believe in your efforts. So thank you, job well done.
Thank you.
Mark Tofano, two-five-nine South Trade Street, Matthews. On December twelfth, I sent an email to the elected officials and staff that were present at the December eighth mini-conference that was held in this room, expressing the profound sadness that I felt as a result of listening to the disturbing discussions related to the desire of our mayor and some Commissioners to have a statement read prior to the public comment portion of the town board meetings. In that email, I urged that the announcement would be strictly procedural and there be no words included that could possibly construed as limit of speech. On January ninth, Assistant Town Manager Becky Hawk authored a letter that proposed text that would be used as this announcement. There's wording in this proposed announcement that gives me great concern. The wording, "All speakers be respectful and refrain from defamation of character." Defamation of character is a legal matter determined by the courts, not arbitrarily by a political figure. In the landmark case of New York versus Sullivan in nineteen sixty-four, the U.S. Supreme Court held that certain defamatory statements were protected by the First Amendment. The court stated that there must be a profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open," unquote. The bar for measuring defamatory statements made about public figures is much higher than for private citizens. For a statement made about a public figure to be deemed defamatory, it must be proven to be with malice. To stop a citizen from speaking on the basis that you judge it to be defamatory is not only depriving that citizen of their First Amendment right, but is also a defamatory statement in itself. The wording, "Each speaker will have up to four minutes." The four-minute rule was put in place by a vote of this board only if it was to be used as a guideline, not as a finite period of time. However, on more than one occasion, a speaker's been interrupted when the four minutes was reached, and on occasion, the gavel was used to stop the speaker from uttering another word. Using the four minutes as a guideline, the speaker should be respectfully minded that the four minutes had expired and then kindly asked if a few more minutes is necessary to finish a phrase or a sentence. The wording, "Discussion between speakers and audience members is not permitted." The definition of discussion, according to Cambridge Dictionary, is the activity in which people talk about something with each other. Addressing the audience and making a comment is not a discussion. Addressing the audience and speaking has been allowed and encouraged during public comment sessions in Matthews for quite some time. There'll be claims that this proposed announcement was phrased in such a way as to reflect the announcements of other governing bodies in the state. What is said there is not important; it's what's said in Matthews that matters. I ask again that any announcement be purely procedural, and that all other wording be removed. There were many disparaging words spoken about the citizens of Matthews on December eighth by our elected officials, but out of this stark moment, there was only one dissenting voice among all of you, and that was Mayor Pro Tem John Higdon, when he stated, "I don't think we should discourage the public from expressing their discontent with an opinion that anybody might have. This may end up squashing public opinion, make less likely the voice to be displeasure of the position, and I think people should be able to say whatever they want." Thank you, John Higdon. And you know the irony of all this? This is a town that states it's friendly to veterans, but it also has elected officials that are all too willing to quell the very rights for which they fought and died. Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment very quickly. First off, the discussion that this board had at the planning conference was freedom of speech. We, as a board, discussed on behalf of the citizens of this town what we needed to do to make the comments made in this room more respectable. And that's it. The item that was going to be read at the beginning of the meeting applied only to the members of this commission. It simply stated that regardless of what another board member says or a citizen says to you as a member of this board, should not inhibit your obligation to carry out your duties and make your opinion known. That was it. That was the discussion. There's a bunch of people in this community have taken that discussion and twisted it up, and to tell you the honest truth, we have decided to stay here for our planning conference, and ever since I've been on this board, we've left town. And I don't know that that's right, but when you can't sit down and have a conversation, honest conversation between seven people and debate among yourselves, and speak for the people of the town, and freely speak, which all of us up here have the right to do, then we're in trouble. We're in trouble if our council cannot do that for the people. And it's uncomfortable. Let me tell you what, when you're in a planning conference and you want to discuss something and you've got the public sitting there, it can get very uncomfortable. But you got to say it. You got to ask those questions. And I will take exception to everything that has been said about that conversation. It was appropriate, and by God, it was ugly. But it was what we do as a nation to work out our issues and differences, to make everything as good as we can possibly make it. The next item on the agenda is planning and development business. We have a report from the planning board. David?
Meeting Mayor, Commissioners. I have the planning board report for our meeting on January eighth, twenty nineteen. Our first item was zoning application twenty eighteen six ninety-one dash fourteen oh nine, fourteen nine oh one Boyd Thunderburg Drive, townhome and commercial development at Idlewild and I eighty-five, R fifteen to R V S, R fifteen C D and B one C D. Our planning board voted four to three to recommend approval, finding it consistent with the land use plan, and created affordable housing opportunities in a walkable community. Next was zoning application twenty eighteen six nine-two, three hundred West John Street, Office Building, R twenty-two O C D. Our planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval, finding it consistent with the land use plan, and conforming to the downtown master plan. Next was zoning application twenty eighteen six ninety-three, multiple Crestdale properties at twenty-one George Clay Lane, eight thirty-four Matthews School Road, seven-ten Selma Burke Circle, and two oh-six Amir Circle, C R C two, C R C two. The planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval, finding it consistent with the land use plan, and it brings additional parcels into conformity with the U D O. Our last item was the housing needs study update. The subcommittee presented their preliminary findings to our board, and presentation to the town board is scheduled for January twenty-eighth. That is my report.
Okay. Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you, Dave. Okay, the next item is taking action on the planning and zoning items that David just reviewed. The first one is zoning application twenty eighteen dash six eighty-nine slash Rice Road. This is to change the zoning from R fifteen to R V S on the certain property designated as twenty-four oh one Rice Road and further designated as tax parcel one ninety-three dash five-three-two dash zero five. Do we have a motion?
Still waiting for my load.
Well?
Let me make a motion.
Okay.
I'll try.
Well?
I would like to make the motion that we defer this for a month. In my opinion, the drawings or the elevations of the houses, I don't think meets the quality or what we're looking for in Matthews. And also, I had a concern about the traffic calming device, which they kind of addressed, but I'd like to have that finalized before we go any further.
So you have a motion to defer until February?
Next meeting, which would be the next zoning meeting.
Twenty.
Zoning meeting. It'd be February, the second meeting in February.
First meeting in February.
Well, yeah, the first meeting in February, second might be October.
February eleventh. Do we have a second to that motion?
Mayor, our organizational resolution we passed last December, we agreed that if Commissioner has just called us to ask for a deferral, we'll grant that deferral. So in that spirit, I'd like to second Commissioner Query's motion to defer until our zoning meeting in February.
Okay. February the eleventh. All right. Is there any discussion on that? Mr. Urban?
I'd like to just go ahead and add on to that, because if Commissioner Milton wasn't going to support that deferral, I was going to go as well. Let me just comment to the petitioner as a whole. I felt that the site plan is an excellent site plan. I mean, really pleased with the effort to make that park-like setting work out. It's a very unique situation from that standpoint. I know we talked about the elevations excessively. I'm not warmed up to the elevations. I think I've been very outspoken about it. They're okay. They're sort of textbook what the marketplace is looking for, but they're not quite what Matthews is. But barring that, there was something that struck me, and it's interesting as we go through these deliberations, that I've had frequent conversations with Mr. Hood via email, and there were some comments about additional buffers and canopy being provided to him. Yet, when I talked to Mr. Hood, I said, "How much has the petitioner reached out to you to negotiate this or talk about these things?" And he said, "Sir, it was only during a community meeting." So I took him at his word, and I felt, well, that wasn't, that's not right. I know that, I think it was Commissioner Query, myself, and Commissioner Dement, during the townhome deliberations over by the church, we met with the landowner next door and the petitioner, and we walked the site and spent extensive time deliberating how to make this a better plan, if we could even make it a better plan. And the petitioner knew that if they weren't willing to sort of work with us, it may go away. So I'm in support of this deferral because, as Mayor Bailey once said, "Take another bite at the apple," so to speak. I have some concerns that Mr. Hood's concerns haven't been fully expressed and addressed, and it's been sort of at a standoff distance. I think he needs to be engaged in these conversations. He lives next door, and frankly, like I've been very firm on the record, I don't have any problem with the hinterland, the areas outside of downtown reflecting the densities of the adjacent neighborhood, and frankly, that adjacent area is much lower than the two-point-two-eight that we're talking about here and back behind it. So I want to give this due course to look at this, if it means moving a house around or a buffer around or a zoning around. But I think we owe it to Mr. Hood and the petitioner to talk together, not at arms-distance length. We did it with the townhome petitioner and the homeowner adjacent, and I feel we need to do the same here.
Mr. Query?
Yeah, I would like to kind of tag on to what John's talking about there. I have not talked to Mr. Hood, but I have talked to John in relationship to it, and had some of the same concerns. But I would like to say to the petitioner, and I sent them a note saying, "I really like the layout they have. I think it's a nice layout for the houses. The actual houses and maybe the density are the only things that I have concern with, but I do like the fact that they've got the parks and the open areas and the tree-savvy areas that they've done."
Okay, thank you. Mr. Higdon?
Yeah, I'd like to just say that I don't dislike the look of the houses. However, I support the deferral. I think the houses look fine, but support Commissioner Urban's desire to have some re-engagement with Mr. Hood.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you. As far as the traffic calming discussion, I would support a three-way stop sign at the intersection near the park. I've said as much, and I think that that would be my suggestion, rather than any kind of speed bumps or humps or whatever.
Is there a need to ask the petitioner to come in? Is there a desire for that?
No.
Okay. All right. Okay, any further comment?
None.
All right. Motion is to defer this item until February eleventh meeting. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So we will revisit this on February the eleventh. Okay, the next item on the agenda is zoning application twenty eighteen dash six ninety-one Boyd Thunderburg Drive. This is to change the zoning from R fifteen to R V S, R fifteen C D, B one C D, and those certain parcels designated as fourteen nine oh one, fourteen nine ten, and fourteen nine sixteen Boyd Thunderburg Drive, and further being designated as tax parcels two fifteen, one forty-one dash zero one, zero three, and two zero. The petitioner has asked for a deferral on this, and staff recommends a one-month deferral. This particular petition is a small piece that is in the town of Matthews, and the bulk of the project is in Stallings. And so I had asked the petitioner for a deferral, to the point where Stallings has had an opportunity to have their public hearing and their counsel to review the project so that we're working together to get a project that's consistent across the board. Is Mr. Carmichael here?
Mm-hmm.
There he is, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Chairman, and the Board.
Good evening. What date would be appropriate such that Stallings will have their public hearing and have time to consider any changes that they may want to make?
So I'm going to ask Mr. Akers to give you a little more detail on that, because he was talking with Ms. Hare, who's the plan director with Stallings, I believe, on Friday. That's a development agreement process, as I mentioned, at the public hearing, and it's a new process there. You know, if maybe we're thirty percent into it, but I think the remaining sixty-seven percent or seventy percent's going to be a little quicker. But I'm going to ask Todd to give you a little more flavor for that, if that's okay.
Todd Akers, ten nineteen Dakerman Drive, Charlotte, North Carolina. I spoke with Lynn about this, and she had said that the next steps were, she was waiting for us to get some renderings over to her, some elevations. Once we get the elevations to her, then we're going to meet with staff one more time, and then the following week, we're going to have a subcommittee meeting with three of the members from their commission and their staff. And from that meeting is when they'll go ahead and finish the development agreement, which should take approximately two weeks. Then they would have the public meeting.
So it sounds like their public meeting will be in February?
We would hope to have the subcommittee meeting by the end of this month, maybe the first of February. the first of February. I apologize. After the subcommittee meeting would be the planning board meeting, yes.
So I don't think I could look you up and tell you, I think they'll have the public hearing before February the 11th. I couldn't make that representation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So I guess what I was thinking was March the 11th is being an appropriate date to defer to?
That's more accurate, yes, sir.
Okay.
We'll do the best we can. We don't control all of that, but we'll do the best we can.
Yeah, okay. So do we have a motion? Mr. Miller?
I'll make a motion that we defer this decision till February 11th. Or March, I'm sorry, March 11th on application 2018-691.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Milton?
Thank you, Mayor. This question's just kind of creative thinking, and it's mainly directed toward the attorney. Mayor, you had mentioned that a very small portion of this project is in Matthews. The majority of it, obviously, in Stallings. It's closer to Stallings. This area may be better served by Stallings. It may cost us more money to service this area. Is it appropriate to ask if we could do a land swap, some negotiation, let Stallings annex this small portion of Matthews, so it would cost them less than it would for us?
That's not permitted. The only way you can do that is have a legislative de-annexation and a re-annexation into Union County. But that would take the state legislature to do that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
There's no municipal authority to do that.
Mr. Query?
Yeah, we've done that on one small area. We had on Stallings Road, but that one, the houses were way in the back of a development, and our people had to go way into Union County to even get to them. I would be cautious about doing that with this piece of property because I think there is an area there that's subject to commercial or industrial that may benefit us also. So be a little cautious on it. I won't say I wouldn't support that, but it makes me concerned when Matthews or Stallings is going into the next county to do anything from the fire and police. So just letting you know, I do have some concerns about trying to de-annex it or whatever.
Any other comments, questions? All right, seen none. We have a motion to defer this petition to March the 11th meeting. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is zoning application 2018-692 West John Street. This is to change the zoning from R-20 to OCD on that certain property designated as 300 West John Street, located on the northeast corner of the intersection of West John Street and North Ames Street, and being further designated as tax parcel 193-251-27. Mr. Camp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the public hearing, your board expressed some concern over really just a few items with this particular petition. One was having the tree and appearance board look at the site. They have reviewed it, found a significant number of invasive species on the site, so the applicant does have an update for you on that, as well as some questions about the style of freestanding sign. So if you all would permit, Mr. Carmichael does have an update for you. If this application, if there's a motion to approve, we would want these items added to the motion to ensure that they become part of the record. So that's all I have for you. It does have a positive recommendation for planning, though.
Okay.
All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's see which one. Oh, that's not it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, thank you very much. I'll be brief. So... So there were some questions about signage, and so Mr. Fontana's come up with a design, and hopefully you like it. This would be the sign. It'd be brick columns supported by a cedar beam, and then you'd have, the tenants have individual signs that would hang from the bottom of the cedar beam. This is a little different than what Commissioner Dement had provided to me, the different style, but the same concept about the dangling tenant sign, so to speak. And then this is just a different version, or actually, it's the same thing, I think. But that's what we would propose to be the signage for the building. And then we would add the notes that the invasive plant species that comprise a portion of ground cover would be removed in connection with the development of the site. And then we'd work with the arborist on the final landscaping plan for the site, but the ground cover would be removed in connection with the development of the site. So we're happy to answer any questions, discuss the signage if you'd like to. I know Mayor Bailey had a question about the signage, and I'm trying to make, I'm not sure I totally understood the question, is if it's...
Well, the sign looks good with the six shingles there, but my concern was that what do you intend to do if, say, you had three tenants in the building?
Yeah.
And you only, I think it would look odd to have like three shingles up there and nothing else.
Yeah. Joe, do you have a, I don't know that we thought about that, to be frank with you, but we can make the shingles larger, I guess.
Or you could leave them blank.
Just leave them blank.
Symmetry is the primary thing, yeah.
Wayne Harris for the petitioner. I think the intent is that they would always be in pairs. So if the two anchors and you had one tenant, the tenant two location would be a blank sign. Once you get to tenant five, I mean, excuse me, the fifth occupant, tenant three, tenant four would be a blank sign. So you always would have the symmetry.
Mm-hmm, okay. Well, if we could just add that as part of the symmetry, that we'll keep symmetry to the sign, that'll be fine. Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Higdon?
I have a question about, a general question, not relating to what was just said. Is that appropriate at this time? More than one of our citizens, Annalisa Watley, comes to mind, suggested that as part of this development, we consider making Ames Street a one-way street. Who needs to address that, Susan? I think it's a good idea. It's a very narrow street. There's parking there. I think if we made it one-way, it'd be good. I don't necessarily think it's the developer's responsibility, but...
And before we do that, Susan, I read your note, and we're only talking about the portion between John and Charles Street. So Ames would be two-way across the railroad tracks.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
Okay.
I wasn't sure that was clear from...
It was not clear in my response to you earlier. Yeah, I didn't get a chance to look into this in more detail after the last meeting, unfortunately. I would have liked to have done, you know, an analysis of alternatives. So there's a couple other things that we could do to increase the comfort level for people driving on the street. The angle of those parking spaces are not standard. They're not quite perpendicular and not quite angled. And, you know, there's a trade-off between the angle of the parking and the number of spaces that you get. So it could be an opportunity to just change the angle on those to make them more standard, which would free up some space. I don't know how much that is. I don't know if it's six inches or three feet, because I haven't looked into it much. The other concern I have is then traffic needing to go all the way to Trade Street, perhaps. I mean, they could go around the block if it was one-way in and people were trying to get out, to make that turn them back onto John Street. But, you know, we have very few connections in town, and, you know, to make one block one-way, we might end up now having to enforce the wrong way because it wouldn't be driver expectations. We want to keep driver expectations. But I haven't looked into it, and I don't have a final recommendation on that yet. I apologize.
But it is something the town could decide, and you may not recommend it, but it's our decision. Is that true?
I'm not sure. I'm actually not sure about that.
Yeah, the town can determine, this board determines your traffic engineering of your streets. You are the traffic engineers of the town, and so at any time, you could legislatively make a decision.
I think we would defer to Susan and CJ's recommendation. But I just wondered if we could do it if we wanted to.
The question is, can you do it? Yes.
I would just ask, Susan, maybe we look into that, you know, something to improve the situation there, even if it's changing the angle of the parking or something.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Recently, we were asked to review our town advisory boards. Under Transportation Advisory Board, I asked them to review that suggestion for Annalisa and this discussion. So I think it would start right there and work its way up, and then decide, maybe another one a different way. So it's already been suggested for TAC, Transportation.
Mr. Mint?
There's no further discussion. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion.
Okay.
Zoning application 2018-692 be approved as most currently amended. It's consistent with our land use plan. The development creates new office space for two companies that are currently located in Matthews, and it will increase the daytime employment population. The development conforms to the downtown plan requirement to create office cottage-style infill development along West John Street corridor. And it's also reasonable because it creates an architecturally compatible office building on an infill lot along one of the most important roadways within our town. For over 20 years, the land use plan and the downtown plan have specified office space as most appropriate for this street.
Second. Okay, that was the consistent portion. We need to do the reasonable.
Well, it was both.
That had to cover everything.
It was reasonable.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Okay, is there any discussion?
Just one comment. I wanted to thank the developers for being creative and getting a true, what could be a signature sign protocol there. Really, I like that a lot.
Is this part of your motion as well?
I like that, yes.
Okay, any other comments, questions? All right. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item on the agenda is zoning application 2018-693 Crestdale, to change the zoning from old CRC to new CRC on four parcels located in the Crestdale community. And I'm going to stop there and not read through the rest of them because this is pretty much something we've been doing in Crestdale for a number of years to bring into conformance particular lots in that community. So do we have a motion for this petition or this application?
Mayor, I'd make the motion that we approve zoning application 2018-693 because it is consistent with the Matthews land use plan in that it encourages mix of land uses in appropriate well-planned locations. It's reasonable that the rezoning will remove properties from special use permit requirements no longer available in Matthews and bring the properties into a current zoning classification compatible with surrounding properties.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Milton, seconded by Commissioner Urban. Any discussion? Mr. Query?
Yeah, not really much discussion, but just to tag on to what you had said, Mayor, is that this has been an ongoing thing for a lot of years, and us trying to work with Crestdale to develop that portion like those folks down there thought was appropriate and would fit back in, and I think this is carrying that forward, and I think it's a good zoning for that area.
Thank you, Mr. Query. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of application 693, raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, the next item is an update on the Monroe Road overlay. Mr. Camp?
All right, well, it's 2019. It's a new year. We're here to talk about the Monroe Road overlay again. I know this was debated quite extensively in 2018, but I wanted to bring back some updates for you this evening, and even a new update as of this afternoon. Commissioner Urban's motion back in December was to bring this back in January, February. Our recommendation is to table this for several months as we kind of look at how we reengage the public, how we really craft a code that's very easy to understand, it's simple and accessible. We had a lot of complaints about the proposed text was confusing, and people were really struggling to comprehend it. So the recommendation you have in the memos to look at bringing this back, at your pleasure, this is something the board still wants to discuss in 2019. We have a recommendation here for three months to come back and bring this back to you once we've drafted some new code. However, what I find as a planner, and planners are kind of weird people, but I thought it was a very exciting meeting this afternoon with members of CATS, Charlotte Area Transit, City of Charlotte, and our newly formed Transportation Department. There are two studies that are going to be very important for Matthews going forward. First, CATS is embarking on an FTA pilot program for a TOD planning for the Silver Line from Matthews all the way to Belmont. This is a really, I got that right, Belmont. We're going all the way to Belmont. That's a study that's going to take some time, but Monroe Road is part of that. The second study, which has a shorter timeframe, is a corridor preservation study that CATS received some funding from CRTPO, so that we can really get the alignment set and start doing land use planning around the future Silver Line.
Jay, would you clarify TOD?
Transit-oriented development. I'm sorry, jargon. Sorry, transit-oriented development.
I thought you were talking about frogs or something.
Yeah. So that study's got a horizon of September or October, really looking at what those cross-sections look like for Monroe Road, where the train would run. Having said all that, I think it would be premature for us to embark on a new overlay for Monroe Road when we're about to find out really where light rail's going to go, what that corridor is going to look like with light rail. It's very high-level at this point, but our recommendation would be to table this until that study is complete. We shouldn't be looking at horizontal and vertical placement of buildings when we don't really even know where the train's going to be. If we dictate 20 or 25-foot setbacks and people start constructing buildings close to the street, and then we later find out that more ride-aways needed for the future Silver Line, that's not what we want to do, is good planning in the community. So that's my speech to you all this evening, is that we really need to look at later this year for opening up discussions on this overlay again, so.
Is there a timeframe that CATS is looking at?
September, October was brought up in the meeting this afternoon, that that study may be complete, but that's a guesstimate?
Okay, we have some competing issues here as far as land use and the rail, so we need to be prompt in ensuring that we have a proper land use direction in place. And these projects, as you know, can drag on for quite a while.
Absolutely. And going forward, we will most likely be doing stationary studies in the years to come, so this is not the first time that we're going to be having this discussion.
And I think, too, that Walter Reed, the mayor of Gastonia, and the Economic Development Group from Gaston County is pushing to get an additional segment from Belmont to downtown Gastonia for the Silver Line. And my understanding is that Monroe has now come back and essentially asked for the same thing. So we could see the Silver Line in maybe well past many of our lifetime, but at some point extending from Monroe all the way over to Gaston. And the Silver Line will go through the new transit center downtown, which will include the train, the Amtrak train station, the new one. And then there's also a plan for the Silver Line to go to a facility at the airport that would work somewhat like a parking facility, except you would get off and catch a bus up to the terminal and then be able to take a bus back when you return and come back on the Silver Line. So it's a pretty exciting project.
Certainly is.
Mr. Urban?
Jay, are you going to be bringing any of the landowners to the table, having a sort of a subcommittee to a subcommittee in terms of talking with, like, Daniel Levine, for example, and some of the other owners?
Yeah, I would envision that, and I would also envision bringing some of the neighbors into the discussion, because if you look back at the small area plan that we adopted, I believe in 13 or 14, the neighborhoods had, especially Sardis Forest, had a lot of input, so I think they also need a seat at the table, because it's not just about the park. So I think they also need a seat at the table because it's not just about the property owners, it's about the people that live in the area.
I mean, but as opposed to waiting six months, are there low-hanging fruit pieces to this puzzle that you could be investigating? Because I know, for example, you know, Point Blank Range, we set that back pretty far. Proximity Matthews, that apartment project hasn't started yet, has been kind of set up with these geared things. Are there areas in this overlay that we could be sort of vetting or discussing now that sort of stays away from that sort of right-of-way boundary but can sort of peel away some of the layers? Because I'd hate to go six months and we get some direction, but we haven't done our, we could have been working on some other aspects of that.
That's an excellent point, the architecture. I mean, that's not going to be impacted unless you're, now, some of these studies are gonna be market studies that look at development styles and density. But we can look at architecture, we can look at parking placement. Those are, that's a really simple one. You want parking to the side or rear of the building. Those are items that I don't think will really be impacted. But if we're also looking at stationary planning and we're looking at structured parking or multi-story buildings, I'm not saying that that's a given, but we could certainly begin research on some of these elements and begin discussing how to put it together.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Camp.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is reports from advisory boards and committees. We have item eight A and eight B. Eight A is the Environmental Advisory Committee. We have the minutes from that. And eight B is the Economic Development Advisory Committee. Also, the minutes from that meeting are included. Next item is the Consent Agenda.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
I've got a comment on the economic, or the Environmental Advisory Board.
Okay.
I'm kind of flabbergasted, to be honest, that given all the difficulties we've had with Republic, they chose not to send any representatives whatsoever to this meeting. Three out of three sent their regrets. Boy, that's really unfortunate and probably not a good move on their behalf when we're having all these difficulties. So just want to bring that to the board's attention, that they chose not to participate in this after we've had lots of complaints. And that's surprising.
A quick response. These are the minutes from the November meeting. We did send out a letter to them in December that we have their full attention at this point, and we're scheduled a meeting with them next week, I guess, to really start to talk about some of these concerns we have. We do feel like their credibility has really been roded in this community, and something's gotta improve.
So you do feel better about it now?
I haven't seen results, but I do know they are mission-focused. They read in the riot act.
When do we rebid that contract?
Twenty twenty-four. Now, you do have, the board does have options. There's what, a thirty-day letter that goes out and says you have thirty days to correct violations. If they don't do it, then we can cancel the contract.
That's all, thank you.
So that meeting is next week?
I don't know. I gotta check.
Okay, we do have a meeting with them.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Higgin. Any other comments? Okay, all right. Item nine is a consent agenda. We have items A through G eight.
Motion to approve consent agenda items nine A through G eight.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next item is unfinished business, item ten A, award contract and appropriate funds for CRTPO planning grant work. And there's Dana.
Good evening. So I am, is this one work? So I am here just to give you an update on some planning grants, the Downtown Mobility Grant, as well as Stevens Creek. And so these grants were applied for some time ago, and you all initially gave the go-ahead. And we have basically gotten the scopes of work back, and we're looking, you know, we're looking through them. And there are some cost changes that I want to go through with you for both of these studies. So basically, we went after these grants from the planning organization, the Transportation Planning Organization that represents us. And there were multiple studies that we had went after. Four of the five were funded. And I believe the language that you all used was not to exceed the hundred thousand dollar as match. The two studies, the downtown parking study, the two first studies, and the downtown walking and biking plan were actually combined into one study. Then there's the sub-area study for East Matthews, Stevens Creek Nature Preserve. And then the final study, the Silver Line Corridor Preservation Study that Jay alluded to, is also within this grouping. It's not, we're not asking for funding for this particular project tonight, the last one. That has to go through CATS and their process. They are the lead on that. So tonight, we wanted to show you that those two studies, so the downtown mobility study came in higher than anticipated. Again, it was those two studies that were combined, and it came in about thirty-two thousand above what we initially thought. As well as the Stevens Creek study, Stevens Creek study came in below what we thought, about eight thousand below, which would bring the total match the town would have would be sixty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-one. The Silver Line Corridor Preservation Study is actually twenty-five thousand that we learned today, not twenty-two-five, that we had matched, basically said that we would match through the CATS process. And so totaling about eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-one. So tonight, we're here to request the Downtown Mobility and Stevens Creek Study appropriation. So there is this graph in your memo to sort of show you those cost differentials. We did talk with CATS, I'm sorry, with CRTPO. They initially matched us a hundred and fifty-two thousand, which was at the time eighty percent. As you can see, the, well, Stevens Creek came in lower. And we basically said, hey, we know we're not really entitled to that match, but would you let us roll it into the study for the downtown mobility? And they said, sure, that, you know, they could, they would let us take that money and apply it towards the downtown mobility, which was great. We did ask for additional funding from CRTPO, and they don't have any left to give out. So that's where we got the total, the town total of sixty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-one. And so that is basically the ask, is actually two things we need to do tonight. One is to authorize the town manager to award and execute the contract. And then the second is to appropriate the funds for sixty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Urban?
We know we have a parking problem downtown, whether it's perceived or literally, in that aspect of it. But talk to me about this downtown mobility and parking plan. What can they do or bring to the table that we haven't already sort of identified or could work internally to alleviate the problem?
Well, I think the group that we have selected, Alta, has years of expertise looking, I think, at problem solutions for us. We, in terms of staffing, we don't have enough staff to dedicate the multiple hours and resources to do something like this. I mean, they would be able to bring their experts to our town, you know, create, look at all of our GIS, all of our shape piles, look at all the opportunities, all the generators and attractors, all of those low-hanging fruits, as well as sort of those long-term projects. And they'll be able to cross stuff out for us and give us priorities. So I think, I think it's a, considering, I've only been here nine weeks, from what I hear that the board's really interested in, I think this is really going to help shape, you know, some good decision-making in the years to come.
Well, I guess twofold. One is, I'd kind of like to understand what the deliverables are that they provide us. The second thing is, though, I was really, we've been talking about this for the last couple of years, pretty intensely. And I was really hoping for some short-term interim solutions that could free up thirty or forty parking spaces just to take some of the pressure off of the reality of the situation right now. So I don't, I don't have necessarily a problem with this, provided the deliverables are really gonna be some well-founded information. Maybe we could get an example of what they've done in other communities. But, you know, we've come to the table multiple times, we've talked about a lot of different locations. I don't know if the other board commissioners agree with me or not, but I thought we were looking for some temporary relief in some circumstances while we're doing some other high-level discussions.
Yeah, and I believe, I mean, I will happily send you the scope tomorrow that you can, you know, read through it at your leisure. But I think low-hanging fruit, as well as sort of those long-term solutions, are things that we're looking at for the parking study. So like you said, sort of looking at the quick things that we can do in town, and then those longer-term things that we would have to take more investment of dollars to do.
Any other questions? Mr. Query?
I'm kind of on the same page with John. We've added to our staff, and yet we're not getting anything back as far as recommendations. We're going out and getting other organizations to do it. And I've got a little concern about how much we're putting out, even when we add staff, that should be able to look at some of it. And that's just my personal opinion.
Two quick thoughts. We have added staff, obviously, but I think like one of the, in this modeling, one of the other items, you're gonna see, like, here's the value of staff bringing an obscure, I think it's relatively obscure, grant that's gonna do a lot of help for us when we're talking about modeling kind of big-picture problems that we're facing and trying to address. So I appreciate what Commissioner Query's saying, but I do know there's expertise that's coming immediately to the table. I guess I would have two suggestions. Maybe we can ask the group that's studying this to, because we have talked about where some of these kind of hidden parking spaces, and maybe we can make that one of their top tasks so that we come back to the board and say, look, here's twenty spaces we hadn't thought about. The other value I see about this, a good example is this development, you know, the developer, Lat Purser, we have a vacant piece of property. And, you know, in my mind, we need to build that, we need to build out that development. And what Mr. Purser continues to say is, well, I don't have any parking. I don't have any parking. And we've been reluctant, really, to go out and find another master developer to do that. Well, the property stays vacant. And I think this, in my mind, could help, like, okay, guess what? It is a problem, and we do need to be patient and figure out other parking. Or that is not a, you know, that's a complaint we hear, but it's not founded in expertise that this group can give us. So I think it can help us in other ways as well.
Dana, I do have a question too. Does this include any policies going forward that we should adopt? Will those be provided to us as far as parking is concerned?
In terms of ordinances? I believe they will review our ordinances. I believe that's in the scope of work.
So part of the expectation would be?
Inventory, yeah, and they're gonna do an inventory of parking spaces, but also an inventory. I believe they're gonna review our ordinances, if that's what you're referring to.
Well, I'm thinking about further development and do our ordinances.
Jay is shaking his head, so I'm going to defer to him.
Do those ordinances force adequate parking to be put in place when the development's done?
I know that there's a review of existing documents, so if they modify areas where, like our minimum parking requirements in downtown, whether those are too much, too little, I think that's part of this process.
Okay.
We've gotta go back to look at the scope.
Yeah, I can verify that, but I'm fairly certain that is part of it.
All right, Mr. Milton?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a comment or a question, then a comment. And in that spirit of what the mayor just said, it leads me to want to ask, will there be a stakeholders' meeting with staff and this board to make sure that our expectation, your expectation is being conveyed to the design firm or to the engineering firm? I just want to make sure that they're hearing what we're asking for, you're hearing what we're asking for. Make sure, but at the end, when we get that deliverable, as Commissioner Urban said, that this is what we're, what we thought we were getting.
Sounds reasonable.
Is there a five-thirty that we can have?
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
Good question.
And to the other, my comment on this is there are, I think there are times maybe we know too much about our area. I've lost plenty of jobs because I knew too much about the project going into it. Having that second set of eyes to somebody can see what we have missed or not seeing the forest from the trees, and that sounds extreme, and it's not intended to be, but I would pay the sixty-two thousand dollars instead of the two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. I like the almost seventy-five percent discount that we're getting. I would support this grant opportunity.
Mr. Higgin?
I think my dislike for studies is well-known on this board. However, I did mention with, when we met with Dana, Barbara and I met with Dana, that I think this is a good opportunity at a greatly discounted price to get good data that we don't have, modeling information that we don't have. And my frustration when I talk to Scott Cole and others at DOT is, you know, you don't understand, you don't have the data, you don't have the modeling, we do. So I think we need to get some of that so we have some ammunition to fight back with. So I would support this. It is, as Commissioner Milton said, at a great discount. And I think it'd be money well-spent to get this data for the town.
Mr. Ben?
I just want to confirm that, too. We've heard many times from Susan and others that we can't approach NC DOT with emotions. And this gives us an opportunity to have the actual data and the facts so we can go with them with what we think is best for our town with real data and with facts instead of just what we think or feel.
And I just want to clarify, so the item that we're speaking about right now is just the downtown parking study and Stevens Creek. So that's that price of sixty-two thousand, that's not, we're gonna be talking about the SPR grant in just a minute, and that's an additional forty thousand, just so everyone's clear.
Mr. Query?
Yeah, I'd like to clear up something. The statement I made was not that I'm not in favor of going forward with it. It's just that some of the low-hanging fruit, I wonder if staff can't look at it for like the short-term period and maybe come up with some ideas with our extra staff. I was not trying to say that I did not approve of the project. I do believe it's a good one to go with. I just think there's some things we might be doing on the side, too.
Mr. Urban?
To piggyback on that, and I hate beating this dead horse, but since we're already beating it, we might as well take it all the way to the glue. I like the thirty cents on the dollar return. I mean, that's a great benefit to the town. Really appreciate your efforts in finding these grants. But it's sort of like the Fremont Street issue, Windstream is occupying our street. It's our street. It should be able to be used for our parking purposes. And it seems to me like that should be immediately sort of a discussion with them is, hey, guys, we're looking forward to reclaim our road, to start entering these conversations. We need to get that back. I guarantee you, if that parking analysis doesn't come back to you and say reclaim their street, I'd be really surprised. So it's those kind of things that we'd look forward to that we could do, just like we're talking with Jay with the overlay, are there things that we can be doing internally? We've talked about that. We've met with Rob Jasek. We had meetings with Rob Hunter before Chief Pennington came on board about here are these areas that could be readily just modified right by COS kids. You know, the gravel area in there, stuff like that. So it's those kind of things that, granted, while they're working on this program over here, we're also looking to try and alleviate some things right away. Otherwise, I mean, I will, you know, most of the time, go for these sort of thirty cent on the dollar type studies because they really benefit us tremendously. So that was my only point. And to give you an exact example to Commissioner Query's point is, we know that's our street, and we could be entering in conversations right now about giving it back.
Mr. Milton?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the town manager to award and execute a contract for the Downtown Mobility and Parking Plan to Alta Planning and Design in a contract for the Stevens Creek Nature Preserve Subarea Plan to VHB with work proceeding when NCOD authorization is acquired and appropriate funds from the general fund.
We just, we have to do number one first.
Gotta do two, all right, all right. But I'll stop with that motion there as listed in Dana's memo to us dated January ninth, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, Mr. Milton, would you like to make a second motion?
And to appropriate funds from the general fund in the amount of two hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars with all but $62,621 being reimbursed through the aforementioned grant.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, all those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, the next item. I thought there were two grants.
We got a, that's coming on down in New Business.
Okay, okay, so, all right, thank you, Dana. Okay, the next item is 10B draft phrasing for public comment policy, and...
I'll be happy to get it kicked off, sure. So as all of you are aware, at the December 8th Mini Planning Conference, out of the discussion that ensued relating to the public comment policy, a request was made of staff to just put together some wording that might best represent the intentions of the board related to wording that could be read prior to public comments, that would help guide speakers with both the procedural aspects as well as the decorum that is asked for out of speakers, without having a chilling effect, that stronger language could potentially hinder the, the public comments as a result of that. So with the help of the town clerk and the communications coordinator, tried to gather some data from across the state, just what else is in place out there in other localities that could be guides. Some were, felt a little bit more restrictive, some was a little bit more broad, and so we really just looked to try to strike the balance of, again, what we thought that the board might desire out of this. So one, one quick amendment that the town attorney suggested right before the meeting started would be to strike the words "strive" to in the first sentence, so it would instead read during public, during public comments, "We will uphold each citizen's First Amendment right to free speech," just to make that a little bit stronger. But otherwise, this is really just a proposal from staff, and it is for your review, and if you wish to discuss it tonight, you are obviously more than welcome to, if you want to ponder it and take it up at another meeting, that is the board's will.
Any questions? Mr. Milton.
Thank you, Mayor. Questions for the town attorney? There were several statements made during tonight's public comment period as to the constitutionality, et cetera, of this discussion, the discussion that the assistant town manager mentioned during our planning conference. Do either of those discussions or the comments made by this board or the mayor give you cause for concern that we may be violating Constitution or, or any other legislative rules?
One thing that's not been discussed, there is a state statute that authorizes municipalities to render rules of public comments in general and rules of public comments at a public hearing. Both have the ability to, to seek order and decorum within those statutory authorizations. The statute is kind of our nest, so to speak. That doesn't mean that the statute may or may not be constitutional, but that's not for us to decide. We would not bring a lawsuit against the state of North Carolina saying that your authorization to municipalities is unconstitutional. There is a presumption that that statute would be defensible. Having said that, if we take out the word strive, as we, as Ms. Hawk just mentioned a moment ago, we will uphold, but remember...